All right, this is a regular meeting of the Norwich Planning Commission. And we can kick that off with a motion on the agenda if somebody would. Second. All right, any discussion on the agenda? All right, motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Motion approved.
Second, Vince, all those in favor of the motion of the agenda? Thank you. Um, so far, just for process points, um, my understanding is if it's unanimous, I don't need to do a roll call vote. So that's why I'm not going through us one by one unless we get into more interesting and contentious topics. Okay, great. I did have just a couple points on the agenda, not so much agenda, but longer term agenda items. Uh, two of them that we definitely have parked, uh, short-term rental uh, policy as a longer, as for later agenda, you'll see one piece of background in the packet, uh, that Stephen did, uh, at when I requested a little bit of background. So that's, that is for background for a future agenda item, not for, uh, not for today. Um, and then the second one is capital planning, which we definitely were, uh, gung ho on, and I had initial conversations with Pam Smith and Brennan. Uh, my plan, just to let you know, and you can, uh, nix it if you want, but my plan tomorrow night at the, so the first new select board meeting, they have an agenda item that is 2025 goals. Uh, my plan was to just chime in during that agenda item and say we have, the planning commission is going to be doing a capital planning exercise, uh, for the town plan. We would, and I've already discussed a joint activity with the select board and town staff, and we would welcome, uh, the select board putting that on their list of 2025 goals. So, um, we'll see how that goes. I know that at least one of the new members is, uh, totally into capital planning. So, um, well, that should get some traction. And I think as, as we talked about it before, it's probably most appropriate, given the conversation on subcommittees and so forth, that the select board appoint an official capital planning committee that has, you know, asks for a couple of planning commission members, it dovetails with our activities and pulls in staff. So that's, uh, that's what I was thinking of doing tomorrow.
Great.
Great. All right. Uh, public comment for items not on the agenda. I see. So you've got Peggy there. I do not see any, um, any Zoom comments. All right. Okay, correspondence. The one thing I see in correspondence is the energy committee's response on solar siting. I would propose, we can accept the correspondence into planning commission records, but then I would just immediately kick it into the solar siting subcommittee conversation. I know either the last packet or the coming packet, um, we, we've seen this. So this, this will go in front of that subcommittee uh, at the next opportunity. So unless anybody wants to make a comment about it now, I think that's the appropriate path for it. Okay? All right, let's jump into the meat of the evening. Zoning regulation review. Uh, and just a couple of both reminders and framing of this. Um, so the idea is we have what are probably seven or eight moving parts here, topics. Um, we are trying to move them through a sequence that we are calling, uh, confirm, discuss, review, uh, actually in reverse order. So the, the most immature ones come under review. Then we, uh, that's just sort of very introductory, uh, and then we have a meaty discussion of proposals and, and topics. And then we get them into the confirm category where we say, this is what we think we're saying. Everybody okay with that? Yes. Then we'll get all of them to the confirm category and then, um, start darting, dotting i's and crossing t's and, and really, uh, getting the whole bundle, uh, together. Uh, the goal in, in talking with Stephen and looking at the status of these where we have kind of threw four of them to the confirmed state and then some pretty specific discussions to have on others. So the goal is for the next meeting to switch to the actual regulations, uh, as the di- the working document turns into, uh, an annotated and edited zoning regulation, right? So then all the changes are rolled into the current document as a track changes word document, and we can all see it in a comprehensive format with everything rolled in. We, if we had tried to do that two months ago, we would have gone cross-eyed, but, um, so the, the goal tonight is kind of get enough solidity to the remaining parts so that we can go to that single document and, and work with it from there. Does that make sense? Jeff?
Yeah. So Jan, you've got the zoning regulation review with A through H that are very difficult to follow in the context of the agenda. So I was going back and forth in the zoning ordinance, trying to figure out which section applies to what. So going forward, you know, I'm not offering, offering anything authoritative. But if our first item is parking standards, let's see that clip. The next item is, you know, certificate of occupancy. Let's see that clip. So I had to parse, uh, all the elements. And again, I understand why it makes sense. So I'm having to go back and forth between the sections and I'm, I'm, uh, I'm going to be a little slow.
So are you talking between, uh, you're talking packet or regulations in terms of?
Both. So, you know, we've, we've got this great packet that says zoning and subdivision regulations, which is great, but then we've got agenda items that, that focus in on certain sections. And I've got to go through the whole thing and figure out where is it? What am I looking at?
Yeah. So I think that's the goal. Let me say two things. One, the, the entirety of the regs and the subdivision regs that are in this today's packet is primarily to give a very first show of Two Rivers comments on those documents. So it's, it's all, it's almost the sep- the last, it's H. Five H is what those documents are there for. Then A through G on the agenda are the individual packet items, um, that are before that. Um, and to your point, Jeff, they don't, they don't run sequentially like they would in the zoning regs. Um, that's confusing and that's part of the reason why, starting with the next meeting, we want to roll everything into a singular document that is the regs. Stephen?
My feeling of that is if we had started with the zoning regulations, we'd really have to have a separate zoning regulation version for each one of these topics. Um, so I think, you know, I'm hoping at the end of tonight's meeting that there's enough familiarity with the topics that we can just throw them all into a single document because a lot of them will touch, you know, lightly touch other areas, right? So, um, you know, keeping that all straight in the beginning would have been difficult. That was my read anyway.
Well, I'm not complaining. The first 18 pages I copied. And that's what we're looking at in, I think, A through.
Yeah, and I did.
Or A through G.
Yeah, and I did send the, um, the, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, you, you put in the packet, uh, Stephen, the uh, lot consolidation one, which is, we're, we're essentially done with. That's, that's.
That's correct. Yeah. I, I wasn't sure, you know, just sort of, you know, keeping track of, you know, everything, you know, every single packet, you know, what sort of the best practice was. I think, um, we are at this point, you know, sort of far enough along with discussions for most of these topics that, you know, we're going to move away from this structure into a different structure. And I think that'll be easier going forward.
Okay. Yeah. And then we can discuss, um, how to, once we have that singular document, what's the best way to track the discussion around?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I'll be honest, um, you know, multiple editors on a single document, I am very open to suggestions about how to best do that. I'm not, that's not something that, um, I've had to sort of oversee before. So, you know, if somebody has suggestions on how best to do this, I mean, do we move it to a Google doc document?
No, that, you know, I mean. So there are open meeting law, uh, points to that. Um, it's, I was talking mostly around just a comprehensible visual document that people can see and see the changes. And if there, if there are six different comments about one thing, hopefully we've gotten past that so that there's enough agreement that we won't have six different opinions on each of the changes. But, um, the, the document itself needs to be managed, collected, collated and so forth by you. It cannot be group edited. That, uh, that would essentially be a non, you know, a multiple number of people making policy decisions or statements outside of an open meeting. So, um, we would need to, so it's more a question of you own the, the Word doc with track changes on it. We feed comments like we've been doing. Um, hopefully those can be shown in the margin of that single document in a way that isn't, doesn't become overwhelming.
Yeah, me too. We'll, we'll work it out.
Yeah, yeah.
But if anyone has any suggestions about how to do that, I'm open.
Yeah. And then it'll be a separate conversation relative to, okay, now we're going into a public facing, either a public hearing or the, you know, much more. Then how do we summarize the changes, the old and the new, in the most, uh, you know, explanatory way? But that's, that's next, next step. Okay. Um, so that is, so lot consolidation is just in there so that you have everything in one place. Uh, we have notes and to talk about that. Um, and I would, uh, quickly, uh, kind of ask in the confirm category, which is the parking. Let's start with just parking and C, C of O. Um, do we have any need to, to revisit the, either of those two? Jeff?
Jeff, I just, if I could just sort of introduce a bit the purpose of, um, yes, touching the minimum parking standards. So, uh, both Act 47 and Act 181 had, um, you know, specific, uh, changes to, uh, law, um, that governs how municipalities regulate parking. So the intent there was to, um, sort of rationalize first our parking standards, which were quite extensive and, but also be in compliance with, um, the new state regulations. So that's, that was the purpose of even opening those up.
Jeff?
Uh, yeah, Jan, I mean, I'm, uh, there are comments that are incorporated in the, um, process document that I think should be incorporated in like site plan review regs. Um, and we're divided from, um, you know, 309 minimum parking standards with a bunch of stuff affiliated with that that could go into site plan review regs. And then we skip forward after, I've got to skip through this to, uh, after conditional use review to, uh, uh, what is it? Uh, you know, the table three, three minimum off-street parking requirements.
That's an accessory dwelling units. And, and the reason I included that is because, um, that within, um, the state regulations for accessory dwelling units, parking is also a topic.
No, I agree. Uh, I'm, I'm just saying, I've got a track here and then there.
Yeah. Can I ask specifically, Jeff? Cause I'm curious if you comment. One of the points is site plan review is a subdivision reg thing?
It's a conditional use requirement. So.
It's a conditional use process.
Yeah, yes. Uh, so the, there, there are a bunch of things here that relate to parking size setbacks and other things that would fall in the category of site plan review as a conditional use review process. I'm okay passing this on with the understanding that language or some facsimile thereof would be incorporated later. It's like, uh, you know, nine by 16 spaces against the sidewalk, things like that. Giving the DRB, uh, the ability to waive standards based on, so.
Yeah.
There's no way to do that in these, these tables or these metrics, but I just want to carry it forward into whatever regulation we're going to change.
So Stephen, can we sum, we need a mechanism that says we're currently talking about edits to the subdivision regulations. In some cases, that will either, the better place to fix something will be in the subdivision regs or it will need to be done in both places. But we need, we need a mechanism to, to have a placeholder, have a bucket where we have a high confidence that it, it happens and it, and it gets remembered.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, what I would recommend for, uh, this topic, the parking standards in particular, um, because they are, you know, fairly, uh, technical, um, and, you know, sort of initially I didn't want to, you know, get into sort of the, you know, the larger processes like conditional use review, site plan review. However, I take your point on board. And what I would recommend is that, um, I think, you know, we agree that we need to comply with the state regulations and we can tackle sort of specific placement of what's been captured in that section. If, I mean, we, I mean, there's a minimum parking, um, section as a sort of general provision. Um, but what I'm hearing from you, Jeff, is that there's maybe some overlap in site plan review. And I'd like to, you know, ask you to, you know, sort of expand on that with me.
Yeah, I mean, just one simple thing under C, you know, it's, uh, 309 C, it talks about, um, parking space shall be at least nine by 18. So, so I don't agree with that. I think there are provisions where we could go nine by 16. But I, I don't want to litigate that here. I just want to talk about how we look at that in a broader context, which to me could be site plan review, uh, in, in a conditional use context, which, which we can do later. I'm okay.
There, I mean, there is, um, in the minimum parking standards, uh, you know, quite wide latitude for the DRB to, um, modify those standards. Um, if, if, if you think that could be, um, brought up in a more full way somewhere else, say in site plan review, or it remains there but carries on into site plan review, I think that's, you know, that's something we should look at. Okay. But in terms of, you know, moving forward, I think this is a, this especially minimum parking standards is, is a topic that we can simply sidebar and, um, you know, sort of rationalize for the sort of feedback that you're providing right now and include that in the final document. I mean, I don't, I don't see the planning commission or anyone really having a problem with complying with state law and just how do we achieve that?
Yeah.
And, you know, the, my first goal is to minimize the length of these documents. Um, so the minimum parking standards as written for this amendment are like half the length.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Is, I mean, is that sort of sidebar?
No, I, I think that's, nobody's arguing with the, you know, simplify within the context of state regs. And, um, I think we've, we've seen this one enough. This one has the, the, the point that it does spill over into site plan review and subdivision regs as the best way to implement some pieces of it. So fine, let's just note that and do the zoning regs the way they should be.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, that being said, I mean, I, I still think we can sort of confirm, you know, that there's a consensus that we need to address these. And maybe the best way to do that is at the final pass.
Mm-hmm.
Well, to Steve's point, uh, you know, we want to support the law.
Yeah.
And then we can refine it based on what our ordinance requirements are.
Yeah. Okay.
And I'd be happy to, you know.
Including waivers.
Well, we're going to get to waivers.
Yeah, we gotta, we're gonna get there.
So is there, is everybody happy with that?
Parking. So are we in, at this point, the question is, are we ready to park it, so to speak? And move it so that when you see it, uh, cleaned up and rolled into a full version. Now, mind you, it, it's not just going to be, you know, you will be able to, it's on track changes. You will be able to see that we changed something. We're not rolling it in and then saying, uh, don't show changes, but that it will be, uh, you know, cleaned up and simplified and we'll know what we're looking at. And that's, that's the, the threshold we're trying to meet on each of these topics tonight. Okay, parking's there. Certificate of occupancy. Are we there on that? That's pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, if just the, um, currently we have, uh, no post permitting inspections of any type. So, um, somebody gets a building permit, we have no way of inspecting, no mechanism in place to inspect what they've done. Um, either explicitly on a building permit, you know, sometimes they capture that in stages, uh, a construction process, but we don't have a certificate of occupancy, um, which sort of, uh, establishes that, you know, the building permit was followed as it was explained and that they have, um, supplied the town a residential building or Arby's, what's the E stand for? Energy standard, residential building energy standard form, which is, uh, um, it's just generally a good idea and a, you know, it, it sort of closes the loop on a building permit. This would only apply to residential uses, residential and commercial uses. Um, so if you're building a shed, you don't need to get a certificate of occupancy for that. It's not to be occupied. Um, but anything that has a residential purpose, and we would charge a fee for that.
Okay. Any other thoughts on CMO? Jeff?
Yeah, I actually think this protects applicants and, uh, uh, I can give a lot of examples, including, you know, I get back into a project and realize the driveway and the ADUs on another parcel. So I, I think this is a good way to protect people in the process.
It's better than nothing.
That's generally, that's definitely one thing we're trying to do.
Yeah. And it's a simple update to, you know, we just explicitly say it as a provision.
Yep. Okay. So we moved that one over the line. Other conditional use. So this is that short edition under C there, um, where the DRB has some discretion for similar uses to, to people understand the purpose and agree with the strategy. Ernie?
I just wanted to make sure, um, when, when, when they say, um, that it's, that it's, um, a similar type of character listed within the district. I mean, how far afield from what is actually is permitted in the district can they go with this?
I would say, starting with the immediate vicinity.
Well, what I mean by far field is how far, how big a difference from what is permitted can they go? You know, for instance, um, let's, I, I think like something like a home barber shop or something like that would be permitted. It is, 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 is a condition. I don't know if it's a conditional use, but I'm, uh, let's say something that's permitted and somebody wants to open up, let's say, two, instead of a home barber shop, which is generally one, they want to open up something a little bit bigger in a neighborhood. Um, you know, it's still a barber shop. It's still something that's permitted. Is that a conditional use or is something like, I don't know, something that manufactures razors in the neighborhood considered a conditional use?
That's, that's a good question.
Yeah. I mean, I think, Stephen, you had, just a second, Jeff, you had in an earlier version here, two or three examples?
Yeah.
I don't know if you can remember one of those just to.
Yeah, yeah, I can remember them. Um, the, the first example. So to, just to back up and sort of lay the groundwork, there are two types of uses, a buy right use, which just requires a permit from the zoning administrator.
Right.
Or a conditional use, which requires review by the DRB. So, um, and those uses are explicit by zoning district. Currently, if a use is not listed as either of those categories, it is prohibited. Um, which can lead to some strange outcomes. So the, one of the examples I had, um, we have a definition in our bylaws for a funeral home. However, that funeral home is not a use that's listed in the village business district. So if somebody wanted to open up a funeral home within the village business district, even though we have a definition for it, it's a conditional use in other districts, it would be prohibited. So this gives at least the applicant the opportunity to, you know, provide testimony to provide evidence and a conditional app, use application for that used based on, um, the sort of normal development review standards. And I think.
Yeah.
I, it was, the reason, the reason I ask is because having spent a long time on the development review board, um, you, and, and that meant, by the way, seeing a number of different organizations of the development review board. In other words, you know, people changed a lot, uh, over that time period. Um, and so, so you kind of get inconsistent results. Um, you know, unless, you know, unless they, somebody is, is appealing to something that the, like the, the development review board already, um, uh, permit, you know, permitted or, or gave a conditional, you know, permitted to conditional use elsewhere. Um, if something new comes up, it's always a battle. Um, and depending on how wishy-washy the, the, the majority of the uh, development review board is, and sometimes they were very wishy-washy, other times they were extremely rigid. Um, you know, you, you're going to get different results. That's why, you know, I, I get nervous when I hear something that's kind of left out, left open. Um, you know, I think, I think the better way of handling something like this is to say, to, to list somehow, um, to list the things that could be considered that are, that may not be, but, but could, that are not necessarily in, you know, permitted, but could be conditional, you know, because I think a gravel pit in the center of town would be a bad idea, but they're permitted elsewhere. Um, and, you know, there's plenty of gravel in the center of town. So, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, somebody could want a gravel pit in the middle of the town. What are we going to do? They, you know, you have a wishy-washy development review board that, that looks just, hey, well, you got gravel, you got your rights. Yeah, we're going to grant a conditional use in the middle of, you know, Huntley Meadow or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. Just a second, Stephen, Jeff's, Jeff first and then.
Yeah. So, um, I, I like the direction this is taking because, uh, and, and I've had some kind of fun conversations. Because, uh, a- and I've had some kind of fun conversation with Steve about. I- is there a place for variances, et cetera? Um. The reality of trying to describe what may comport with a commercial district, we're never gonna get it right. Ever. I've worked in two hundred fifty towns. None of them get it right. There's, there's no way to track down all the pieces and parts. I think Ernie's example is a good one. You talked about gravel pit. That ain't gonna fit in this definition. So the reality is, in a commercial district where our commercial districts are. There's no neighboring property that contemplates something like a gravel pit. Frank, frankly, we don't have the resources in any commercial district in town, uh, that, that would support that. What this does is allows, like Steve said. Uh, with, with a, you know, uh, the administration and an applicant come to the DRB and say, hey, look. This wasn't contemplated in the zoning ordinance, like three hundred and fifty thousand other items we haven't thought about. Might we review this in, in the context of conditional use review, which is fairly significant? To, to see if it might be permitted. Uh, and I can ramble on for a while, but I just think this is, this is a good way to approach this topic.
Yeah.
See, this, but I have a problem with the fact that, you know, the Development Review Board's not supposed to be in the position. Of developing policy. Um, or legislation, which is kind of what that does. You know, this, this process kind of leaves the Planning Commission out of the loop. And laws can, you know, it allows the, the Development Review Board to actually change laws. And then Planning Commission would either have to come back in afterwards and say, no, 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 and, you know. Depending on the timing and stuff like that, that's the sort of thing that can lead to a lawsuit. Um, so we don't want that. That's, that, that's, yeah, I mean, no matter, Jeff is, I'm sure, I, 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 Jeff is right that. It's hard to get this right, you know, from his point of view, they never get it right, and I, I wouldn't argue with him. But the point is that you still can't leave the door open to, to mistakes. You have to close the door to the mistakes, and then if somebody makes a mistake. And it's really well intentioned, or it's an accident or something like that, then you can, can look at it, but to sort of just leave the door open. Um, that's not a good policy, because first of all, somebody might take advantage of it as well as, and the thing is, is, you know, like I said. Depend, you, you, you're gonna get inconsistency over the course of time. And you're leaving the Planning Commission out of the loop. Somebody else is making a policy that's really the purview of, of the Planning Commission.
Hmm.
That's why we have to think of it in advance. We're the ones who think in advance. They're the ones who, who have to act on what we've already thought of. And, and, and find a way to apply it.
So we got. I think, I mean, I, I hear you, Ernie, and I think to, to paraphrase, the, the question really on the table is. How much flexibility, how much interpretation? Is, uh, is in, enabled, is given to the, to the DRB? If you give them zero, and you try to say, essentially say, everything's prohibited unless we listed it. Then to Jeff's point, you, you will never list them all, and things will be prohibited that shouldn't be. Uh, to your point, you give them too much leeway, then, uh, there's inconsistency and there's too much. Uh, policymaking by the DRB, but that, that's the balance we're trying to, I think, just a second. I think that the, um, you know, there's several statements within this point about similar type or character. Not detrimental to other uses in the district that are putting guardrails. On it, but just, let's, let's let Christian chime in, we haven't heard from him.
Yeah, I just wanted to basically echo support. I agree with it, what Jeff's saying, it's just too impossible to list everything, and so. Coming up with a solution where people can go through the, like, the detailed process of. A- asking for a waiver makes sense to me. I think if there's specific items in specific zoning areas that this board, this commission wants to. Be more strict and prohibit, I think we have that ability. Um, but I agree, I totally think we're never gonna list everything. Especially not, we can't do it now, we're not gonna possibly list it for the next twenty, thirty years, whatever this is gonna stand in effect for, so. I like the direction this is going, and I just wanted to echo support for what Jeff and Stephen are working on.
I think just to be technical, we want to careful of the word waiver versus what we're talking about here, but I hear you. Ernie and then Jeff.
Um, well, one of the things that, that you use in, in design engineering. And if you're manufacturing a list of, a, 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 a range of similar things. And here we're kind of talking about the ranges still fairly broad, but you don't, you, you, when you, when you're doing briefs and stuff like that, uh, design briefs and things. You come up with qualities is the very first things you deal with, not, you don't say, we want this thing. They made like this, we say, we want it to have these qualities, these qualities, these qualities, these qualities. And we could list the qualities of what we want. And without saying, no, you can't have a house that is this size, or no, you can't have a gravel pit ever, no matter what, no matter, I know how. Under any circumstances. Um, if it otherwise comports with what is going on in the neighborhood. I mean, you know, there's a difference between saying you can't do something. Or instead of saying, the things you do have to have these qualities, and the things that you can't do, these are qualities we don't want. Um, our attributes are of definition, something like that, but you don't, you know, make them adjectives and adverbs, not, not nouns. I guess, I'd say.
Yep, I understand. Jeff?
Yeah, so I think the gravel pit, uh, you, you know, without trying to undermine Ernie, the gravel pit supports.
Is that a pun?
Well, but it's just, it's just.
I said dead on arrival the last time I described the funeral home, so.
It's just, there's nothing in the commercial, in our commercial, so, so let me pick something controversial. So if you said, well, a gas station. Okay, so Dan and Woods has a gas station. You could say, because it's, it's an existing use in the commercial district. Yeah, I think that could be something that is considered in this context, but what does that mean? Depending on parcel size, it could go to Act two fifty because of commercial, commercial use. But there's a ton of other stuff from a regulatory process that gets reviewed by the DRB in terms of the conditional use review, so. You know, the DRB could say, hey, we do have a gas station in the commercial district, so we might contemplate this. So why is there's. You know, a basis for supporting this in terms of all of the regulatory. And, you, you know, I could pick on other things, um, you, you know, grocery store or a C store. There are a whole bunch of things that tie into that. From local review, which is, was, you know, it's significant, traffic studies, the site plan review. To, uh, onsite water wastewater considerations.
Public testimony.
You, public testimony, depending on the, the, the parcel, Act two fifty, so. A- again, if I pick real issues that may reflect what our current uses are, you know, another bank, should we have another bank? Uh, although that's a permitted use, I think.
Uh, yeah.
You know, I'm just, I'm just picking examples to say, I, I'm not concerned about. Uh, the latitude that the DRB may have to evaluate what the current situation is. And then the layers of review that would be required by conditional use if, uh, if it's submitted.
Can I, I would just pu- point out one more thing, maybe the flip side of this, um. And, and just to ask on the appeal process, for example, so it says a use is not detrimental to other uses in the district as well as adjoining uses. So if somebody gets past a lenient DRB with a gas station next to a neighbor. The neighbor can say, wait a minute, that's detrimental to my use. I want to, either, first they chime in at the DRB hearing and say what they said want to say. And then theoretically, they have some kind of appeal process.
Yeah, to it, bar, I don't worry.
Yeah. Yep, I mean, my take on this is, you know, we can sort of do, go in two directions. One would be to sort of table this topic, um, in its entirety for another time, because I think it. To Ernie's point. Using, you know, sort of generic terms to sort of capture, um. You know, at a conceptual level. Types of uses in a district is a good one. Uh, I think it's hard to pull off. Um, but, you know, I've sort of heard anecdotally that some towns are, are doing that, so there might be some models to follow. And also, you know, we could sort of then look at conditional use review in its entirety, just to make sure that everybody's happy with that. That whole arc that it provides the, um. The, you know, se- sufficient guardrails to, you know, prevent. Terrible outcomes. So we could just table the topic. Um, for another time. On the other hand, um. You know, I, I think, you know, right now, and, you know, sort of, in, in my experience, um, you know, DRBs are, you know, generally. You know, fairly, um, thorough in their review process, and there, there is. In, you know, in, in the, the, the language that this proposes. You know, it's pretty sturdy. Um. And I do, you know, feel that, you know, to, again, to Ernie's point. I don't, I don't think, uh, you know, DRB is making policy. They may make bad decisions. But they're not making bad policy, and I would. Prefer to, you know, im- improve the ability of the DRB to make good decisions than, um, than otherwise.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Ernie?
I agree with Steve on that, 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 the, the Development Review Board should be given tools to, to make good decisions and all that. I, I just want to say, though, that when they make a set of, when they feel that they have set a precedent. That's when they're setting a policy. Um, and they, and, and the word precedent came up a lot during the fifteen years that I was on that, that board. Um, it was very frequent, so. They, they do, and, and, and what they were doing is it was setting policy. There's no, no, no alternative way to look at that. It was policy. That was really the purview of the Planning Commission. Um, you know. It, 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 what, what? What, what would be a smart thing to do if we had, let's say, something that was really, that was really a, a bad deviation? You know, we would want the, 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 the planning, the Planning Commission to immediately address. What they did and decide whether that should be made into a law or should be. Uh, or whether they, it should be either blessed as, as, as a, as a fair thing that we have considered as a good policy. You know, the, the good policies don't have to originate with us, but they do have to be blessed by us, at least. Um, so we could, we, you know, if they've, if they come up with something that sets a precedent. We should, we should have to re, be, we, we should be required to review it promptly. So that we can decide whether they come up, when the next time they come up against something like that. Um, we, we can say, yeah, you can, you, you're good to go with this, or we tell them, no, you're not.
Yeah, can I just, I, I wanna, I wanna keep moving here, so I, I'd like to. Ask the group whether to, my preference is to leave it in the discussion and not table it at this point. Um, so I would ask for kind of a, a straw man, uh, agreement to leave it in for now. And if there's, if there's something that comes up either in Stephen's mind or other people's to. Add a few words, add, add a feedback loop, some, something that. I, I understand Ernie's concern, and it's essentially you give too much leeway. In the interest of giving some flexibility, you give too much leeway. What are, how do you get the guardrails where we want them? But I'd, I'd like, I propose leaving it in to our, uh, changes, proposed changes now. And.
Agree with that, yeah.
Okay.
I, I agree with that.
Okay. Anything else right now on that, or let's move on? All right, thank you. Good, good discussion. Um. All right, so those are the, uh, confirms. Now we've got ones that we know are, are more, uh, got some discussion to do. Uh, and then on the, the ADU one, we have, we've gone around several times. Um, but we, we seem to bring up some useful, uh, new nuances, uh, each time. So there are a couple, uh, one related to duplex versus simplex, and, um, another related to an existing ADU structure. Uh, that have come up since the last meeting, so to get us all talking about the whole ADU. Topic, I think, Stephen, you can pull those up and we can look at them.
Yeah, do I need to do anything to share my screen?
You may have to, you're co-host, you should be able to share as co-host.
Yeah, okay.
It's not telling me to give you permission or anything.
Yeah, so I'm screen sharing.
Yeah, yeah, it's working.
So, the, I think, you know, their last meeting, there was some conversation about, you know, can you can. Uh, duplex can't be treated any differently than a single family home. Say somebody converts their house to a dup- a duplex, how does that affect the sort of ADU question? I think that was one of the questions, um. You know, and the, you know, essentially, so if somebody came to me and said, I want to convert my single family home to a duplex. Um, I would review it as I would a single family home, and I, I don't think I would consider. That a change of use. I mean, it's residential to residential, um. So, you know, it's not a, a change of use per se, um, and I would treat it as such. Also, if there was an existing permitted ADU, I wouldn't factor that into my decision to. Um, permit a conversion of it from a single family to a duplex. So, you know, essentially, the, you know, Act forty seven mandates that, you know, duplexes have to be treated just like single family homes, so. Um, you know, if you had. Uh, you know, if there was an existing ADU, I don't think that would change my, um, analysis of that situation. Um. The sort of second question that came up was, okay, so you now have a duplex and an ADU. Could you build another ADU? So, um, the sort of. Disaster.
Well, befo- before you, before you even get to that one, Stephen, the, the, the. Other version, the other scenario of single versus duplex is. If you have a duplex and no other ADU. Do you have the same rights to build an ADU as you do with a single?
That's right. That's the question.
And it, it sounded like one of your reads there, and that's the thing I think that is in bold in the comment.
Yeah.
Screen here is that if you really read it tightly, the state reg, uh. Applies to single family homes, so that some of the things we're talking about with ADUs, if we want them to be. The same. If someone started with a duplex on their lot, uh, and wanted to do something with an ADU, if we wanted that treated the same. We would have to spell it out a little more.
Yes, so what Jan's referring to, which you can see on screen. Um, is that no bylaw shall have the effect of excluding as a permitted use, one accessory dwelling that is located within or. Appertain to a single family dwelling on an owner occupied lot. So no mention of duplex. Jeff has a question.
Jeff?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, with the whole CFO paradigm, we're trying to it off. So let's say Steve gets an application for converting a single family home to a duplex. That's got to go through the, uh, Vermont Agency Natural Resources. You've got to prove existing capacity, future capacity, get the approvals, and if so. Grant the approval, and I think the CFO paradigm helps better protect all involved.
The CFO?
Uh, Certificate of Occup.
Of occupancy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So right, if you were going to, if you needed more septic to do a duplex, you gotta get that permitted. And Stephen won't give you your certificate until you get it, yep.
Yeah, what I'm trying to say is, the, the notion that we have is, the, if I'm gonna say CFO again. The paradigm where our zoning minister looks at this, you know, the requirements for this confirms you've got existing capacity, future capacity. I don't have any problem with what Steve said, single family home duplex, same residential use. Now, I, I, I appreciate the fact that this is highlighted, and to the extent there is a need to talk about an accessory dwelling unit. In greater, uh, with, with, with additional text, I think we should do that. I'm glad this is called out as something that, that might be a gap. But whether it's a single family home or duplex with an ADU. Personally, I don't have a problem. My problem is more than one ADU.
Yeah, yeah, I think the, the proposal on the table based on finding this. As we dug in a little more, is to simply add whatever language makes sense to. Uh, add, to have duplex be treated the same. Uh, and to, to correct what's in bold there, to make it so that a duplex can have an ADU. Uh, and to, to correct what's in bold there, to make it so that a duplex can have an ADU. Uh, one ADU, uh,
Yeah.
Well, at, for this conversation, we'll, we'll talk about another one in a minute about pre-existing ADUs. Ernie?
Yeah, and you know, the amendment does say there shall be one principal dwelling per structure, so we may have captured that already.
Principal dwelling structure.
Okay. You may have answered my question, but I'm not sure yet. Um, what happens if somebody has, oh, how, how does all this play into a situation where somebody has a relatively good sized house? And they want to subdivide it into two, into, let's say, two, a condominium, you know, of two. Which this town does have in it. There's a couple of condominiums and twos. How did, how does that play out in, in this scenario? Because I just heard Steve say, well, one's gotta be a, a principal residence, I think you said, or something. Um, but what happens if you have two principal residences?
Um, I think the one, the thing you just read, Stephen, was there shall be one principal dwelling structure, so that could be a duplex. That could be a duplex, or it could be a large simplex that got turned into a duplex on the lot. Jeff?
Yeah, so, um, I, I have a problem with our definitions and how we use terms like bylaw, principal structure, you know, zoning ordinance versus subdivision regulations versus the planning commission's bylaws. None of them are saying, we need to, we need to have a consistent.
What would you like?
Should be zoning regulations, right?
The zoning ordinance, you, you know, I don't care if it's zoning regulations, zoning ordinance.
It's zoning regulations in Article One.
Then it's fine, and it's not bylaw, but, but anyway.
It's not bylaws. Bylaws, bylaws are how we decide who chair, who the chair is.
So my point is, let's clear up the confusion, so if there's a principal structure on the lot, then we can go into the definitions and say it may be a single family home or duplex. That's a, that's a simple fix to accommodate
Yeah.
an ADU. The question of condos, uh, now we're talking site plan review and, uh, and conditional use permit.
Why? What's the, I, I hear you, but what's the, what's the difference between a, a two-unit uh, condo and a, and a duplex?
I was gonna try and address that with my, that was my next.
It's, it's a for, con, that's just simply a form, form of ownership.
Yes.
Meaning who, who owns the land versus owns the structure and things like that?
Yeah.
It, it's, it's more than one person owning parts of the same place.
Correct.
So to Jeff's point, which I think is a useful, you know, we, we could solve some of this in definitions.
Uh, yeah.
If we were, if we were clean and we looked at these scenarios and we said, oh, well, that one's actually better solved in the definitions. Vince? You're muted.
All right, we might address this at the next phase of our discussion, but, um, can, maybe Stephen, can you clarify what goes into turning something into a duplex? Because does that mean that one, is that, you know, make it as fifty-fifty as possible? Is that kind of make one of?
No, I mean, there, there, there are any, you know,
Common law.
S- s- yeah, set rules. There are, I mean, we have no- nothing in our regulations to define how a duplex should look. It's simply two structures within this, well, two dwelling units within a single footprint. How that's, you know, expressed, we don't have.
And you can, you can sell them separately, correct? I mean, that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, uh, there's forms of ownership that would allow that. Absolutely.
Hey, hey guys, a, a duplex or a triplex or whatever, it's about common walls, townhouse, it's a townhouse. However, you incorporate that in, in terms of ownership, multifamily is different ownership, different residences on different floors. So right now, we're talking about wall to wall to wall.
Yeah.
And it's that simple.
Yeah.
So that's, I, I hear you and that makes common sense. Is that reflected in our definitions?
Uh, uh, for what?
For a duplex, if, if, I mean, if, if we are going to, if we're gonna use the word duplex anywhere in these regs, then it's gotta be defined, right?
Yeah, I think we will, um, have a definition for duplex. As we do.
And it wouldn't hurt if we've got something that says.
You know, it, we generally have, I mean, right now, we have a definition for, for structures, which describes a whole series of structures. Um, it, what I'm hearing here is there might be some interest in separating those out into specific definitions. Happy to do that, um. Either way, we have to have someplace for somebody to say, I don't know what a duplex is. I'm gonna look in the definitions.
Right, and you have principal dwelling structure here. Uh, and we obviously have accessory dwelling unit defined, but those are
Accessory.
I think we should, we should really, uh, take the time to look and say, everything that we're using and stating is defined. And we'll get into another one in the next conversation, which is an existing accessory, accessory dwelling unit as opposed to a new one, but, uh, Ernie then Vince?
Okay, I just wanted to propose that, that first of all, it, it doesn't make any difference if somebody makes a duplex and has it under one ownership or if they sort of condominiumize it. Um, I don't think we should treat them differently. Um, because, you know, there's a contract and deeds and all that sort of legal stuff that has to be done to make it a, to do, deal with it either way, so I don't think it really has to affect what we're trying to accomplish with this, with this, with this, uh, this piece of law. Um, what I'd like to suggest is that, um, we, we treat them the same. Um, but I'd also like to add that we should say something because if somebody wants to separate it or turn it into a condominium vertically as opposed to horizontally, um, I think that still should be treated the same also. Um, I don't think it should matter if it's, I think Jeff had the definition of multifamily. Is, right, it's all splitting hairs, but the thing is, is if we say duplex, you know, duplex ha, you know, has a meaning, so if we.
Right, I, I thought duplex was two and multi was more than two.
Well, Jeff.
I, I, I was, I was saying splitting hairs to Jeff, sorry, that was over the table here. I wasn't saying that to you, Ernie, I.
I, I, no, but what I'm just trying to say, just so we make sure that those, those two options don't get knocked, knocked out, one doesn't knock the other out, that's why I.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, I don't want to talk over Vince, Jan, before I.
Okay, Vince, let's, what do you got?
Oh, um, again, not to overly complicate this, but, um, I guess at what point is something decided that it is a duplex if it shares a vertical wall versus an attached ADU? And is there a benefit or does it really necessarily even matter which?
Good question.
You call it?
Yes.
Yeah, well, your definition would have to do with principal, uh, substantially uh, separate from things like that, right?
This, the state, the Title twenty-four defines a duplex as, uh, two residential units, neither of which is an accessory dwelling unit.
I kind of back into that one, okay?
So, so hey.
Somebody, somebody.
That's, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, you can look that up. That's how the state defines it.
Yeah, that, that leaves us a lot of leeway here though, too.
It does.
That, 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 that allows them. Everything I just was asking about, uh, sort of proposing, whatever, that leaves us that, that means we do that sort of thing. I mean, if, if you don't call it an ADU, then it's it's, it's a.
If it doesn't meet the definition of an ADU,
Right.
that it can be half of a duplex. Jeff, did you have something on the multi?
Yeah, Jan, I, I, I appreciate Steve saying it's splitting hairs, uh, but, uh, my, my problem is, you know, to, to the, uh, to the duplex, uh, townhouse, P U R D, multifamily. I would like to see us codify multifamily, but, but I, I think there's, uh, at least let me reframe that. If there's, if there's state law that allows a duplex with an over/under, I'm not aware of it. So I, I think we need to be, and I'll just conclude by saying, we need to be very clear in our definitions. And in terms of the multifamily hair splitting thing, I would like to advocate for multifamily at some owner's process.
So Stephen, if you can take that, uh, as a, something to do for, for the next time, if we clearly want to take a, take a good look at our definitions and make sure we're defining all the things we need to. And then we have a specific question which relates to duplex and multifamily distinction. Um, uh, whether it's, you know, side by side, multiple floors. So when we do our definition of multifamily and of duplex, we want to be cognizant of that question.
Yes, um, I'm sure there is a definition, um, from the state for a multifamily dwelling.
Okay.
It's probably as wide open as duplex.
So my question also, when we talk about duplexes and, and condos and ADUs and so forth, that the state reg that's up there, uh, forty-four twelve, just before the, the part that's a little gray highlighted on an owner occupied lot. So, anything we're talking about in this entire constellation of topics assumes that the owner lives on, in one of the dwelling units. Could be one of the duplexes, could be the ADU, could be whatever, but there's an owner, some, the, the lot. So that's, and just an important point to keep in mind.
And I, I think this, that's captured in this document, um, which I can't seem to scroll here.
I remember we had it in.
Yeah, Article five, which are the definitions in our, um, land use regulations, zoning regulations, um, that is clearly scored into a primary dwelling on an owner occupied lot.
Okay.
So that goes in.
Yeah. It just doesn't specify which, which dwelling they occupy.
No.
Which is preferred in my mind because we want that flexibility. That's the whole point.
Yeah, and you know, sort of the, as it stands now, there, there's some, you know, rules about that. Which are, you know, impossible to enforce, so.
Yeah. Ernie?
Well, I was just thinking that, that, again, going back to having multiple owners, also, that's, that's still, you know, can, that doesn't change, you know, that, that doesn't contradict our, 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 have any problem with this, 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 the way the law is set up because it's at least one owner. I would have, if you have multiple owners, it doesn't really make any difference as far as, it shouldn't make a difference. So if you have, let's say, a condominium, a condominiumized uh, place that would be, look like a duplex or be a duplex or multifamily, it doesn't even matter which if it's hor- horizontally or vertically divided, none of that matters. It also doesn't matter how many owners there really are. Um, you know, you can always have multiple owners. Um, and like that too, and I don't think that should be the, you'd have, you gotta have at least one resident, I think, is what the law actually is requiring, but you could have two owners. And I think the, I think, I think the ownership of the ADU has to be related to the, the people who are the residents, not, I think, I'm not sure if that's, you know, I, I don't know if you know, it's not clear to me if an ADU can be.
Separately, separately owned.
Yeah, I, I, it's not clear to me whether it can be.
Hmm.
Um, or if it has to be, you know, or, or if it can be, I.
Yeah. It needs to be clearly subordinate to a primary residence.
Well, that. Can it, can it just get that specific question? And I think what Ernie's asking, and I would ask the same question, just yes or no, can the ADU as defined be owned by someone else?
I see, I think.
I mean, the municipal zoning doesn't really deal with ownership.
That, that's, that's why I'm saying it could be owned by somebody else, as long as.
That's a yes, yeah.
Long as it can't be subdivided off, but, but that's not really stated in anything, so that might be something where we make make it a little bit more clear, you know, just because we have better ideas in the legislature, doesn't mean that we're wrong. Um, you know, if we're, if we're covering a piece of, uh, covering some ground that, that they neglected, you know, as long as we're not, we're not breaking the law by doing that. Um, you know, we should do it, make it as clear as we need it to be.
Okay. So to, to back up just for this topic, and we'll, we'll wrap it back up in a minute, but do people agree with whatever specific wording changes are needed to make a duplex be treated like a single, uh, for the purposes of ADUs?
Yeah, I know, I can go with that.
Okay, so Stephen, you can look and see what, what is the best way to implement that in the wording?
Sure, and just to be clear, um, we're still exploring whether or not to include the phrase on an owner occupied lot.
I, I was done with that, but I don't know about other, I, I was done. I want it, I, it's there now and I wanted to keep it there, but what other people think? Bob?
Uh, I, I guess that's my question, maybe I, I skipped something, but does that preclude adding an ADU then to a rental? If someone has a house, is renting it, they can't add an ADU to it?
Well, you, if you rent a house, you still, you still own the house you're renting.
But you're not occupying.
You're not occupying it.
And then also, if you, uh, can you rent a house and also rent the ADU, that, that's maybe.
That's currently not allowed right now, right? You have, someone has to, you can't rent both properties as the current regs stand. Jeff?
Yeah, I like the current language just to, uh, not go into the Airbnb paradigm that has shafted Woodstock, so let's keep it this simple for this round, in my opinion.
So for the intent that we're asking uh, staff to craft the wording for, we want the simplexes and duplexes to be able to have the same abilities relative to ADU, ADUs, uh, detached ADU, um, but they, we leave the owner occupied, uh, lot in there as a hook to keep the whole thing from being rented simultaneously. Ernie?
Yeah, I think, and then I'm I feel bad because I'm, I'm making this more complicated. Um, I, the, there's a concept of domicile that might be useful here, where we say that, you know, the, the, instead of saying, you know, a, a resident or whatever, however it's phrased, you have to say domicile so that it's clear that this is where the person lives. Or if it's, let's say a condominium, again, I keep on wanting to make sure that we don't leave that out, that the people who own the place, that's their domicile, not, not something that they can just rent out, you know, that they're, you know, absentee landlords or anything like that. That's, I think what we're, I think the purpose of this, this law, if I understand it correctly, um, you know, what the state intended was to actually have more actual residential housing built in the state, not to have, you know, um, Airbnbs and all that sort of stuff. And I think that, um, you know, if we sort of make it clear that things have to be domiciles, not A or BnBs or any of that sort of thing, you're kind of getting, if, if you just say it has, it has to be a domicile, because domicile doesn't mean you own it, it just means you live there. So, you know, an ADU that's a domicile is still somebody's residence, you know, and they can vote and all those other things that, that being a resident gets you. Um, and if they own the place, that also gets them the privilege of paying property taxes.
Okay, yeah, and I'm, I agree with the danger, I agree with the danger of getting it too complicated if we throw in a new word, but, uh, we'll see. Christian?
I just wanted to, the, what started all this, I believe, was the twenty-twenty new Vermont State Law one seven nine, and so they call it a single family home dwelling on an owner occupied lot. So if we're just being consistent with Vermont State statute, we just say owner occupied lot, we move.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and so we're just tweaking it a little so that a duplex can create a, a detached ADU just like a single family can. That's, that's the change.
Yeah.
That we just talked about. So just to throw one, maybe more minor curve ball at it, the question, the, the next question on the table relates to existing ADU. So if, if somebody's got a single family and a ten, fifteen-year-old ADU, um, what can they, can they add another ADU, or am I saying that wrong, Stephen? How to, how to?
Yeah, I would, so, the, the way this amendment was originally written, it excluded that section that's highlighted right now, so we were allowing approving up to one accessory dwelling unit within or attached to a primary structure and one detached accessory dwelling unit, so in essence, two. Um, I think it would be more effective, um, a clearer outcome and just more rational if we extended the first clause within or attached to a primary structure to include any pre-existing accessory use structures, where the example is you own a house, you have a two-car garage, you have space above your two-car garage that you have converted to, that you would like to convert to an ADU. I think that should be possible in the same, um, you know, with this same idea is, you know, that's an accessory used to a primary structure. And that we allow a detached accessory dwelling unit if there's capacity and they can, you know, comply with the criteria. So it's, you know, it's basically just um acknowledging the fact that, you know, many circumstances are, you have a home with a detached garage, somebody wants to put an ADU above the garage, and maybe down the road, build a granny flat for, you know, their mom.
Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I think the question of historic use, you know, what's grandfathering? So hypothetically, if you've got a home with an ADU attached to it, make it a duplex, then you can do an ADU. If you've got a home with a garage, with a, with a, uh, you know, apartment over it, that's an ADU. Okay, you've got the primary uh residence with an ADU, you could do a duplex with a primary home. So I'm not inclined to change the rules.
I don't know how that makes it any clearer.
Well, right now, we're looking at a primary residence, including a single-family home or duplex. We can add a one single ADU to that mix. So the question is, what do you do if there's an existing ADU attached to the home? You can't add another ADU unless you make it a duplex. It's, that's a definitional thing. If you want to do it, if you've got a home.
Very definition of duplex excludes accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, but if, if we say, uh, we have an ADU, so we have basically one live, one family living in a home with another family, that could be presented as a duplex. The question is then what happens to the wall, et cetera. So then we have a provision for the ADU in addition to that. I, I'm still not in favor of adding more than one ADU, even though I am in favor of primary structure, including a single-family home or duplex.
So, you know, the, the way we, it's written, and, you know, I think we've all seen this for a long time. It was the ability to have two, right, right? The, but in the original conception, it could only be attached or within the primary structure, the primary dwelling. You could have one within the house or attached to the house.
Then you're going, you're going way, you're going way back, Stephen, and then we got so that it could be detached. And you could have two, one detached.
Yes, yeah.
And now we're, now we're saying the one primary can be a duplex, so that you can end up with three dwelling units on a lot.
Yeah, I, I, I'm saying, I'm not really saying that, what I'm saying is, you know, we were, you know, in the position to allow two ADUs.
One detached. As long as you didn't have, I guess, let me flip it around, as long as you didn't have a duplex, so that you, so if you said, oh, you can have three dwelling units, if I had a, a single-family home with an ADU inside that home, attached to the primary, and I had a detached ADU, I'd get to the three. But when nobody at this point seems comfortable with enabling four.
We're not enabling four, we're just saying the, the first or the second could be either in the primary building.
Right, right.
And it, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's the limit, that's the limit I'm trying to, to, trying to simplify it with simply max number of dwelling units per lot, and we're not talking about going above three.
Right.
We're talking about whether or not that third one can be added after the fact. You have one in the garage and you have, you don't have one in the single-family home, but you want to add one to the single-family home. You'd end up with three dwelling units, but you will have made an ADU when you had one out in a detachment. That, I don't know if that helps, but Jeff?
Yeah, I, I think I'm seeing it the way you are, yeah. Last time I thought we talked about, I'm not in favor of two ADUs. I am fine with a, with a duplex and an ADU, which is what you're talking about with respect to three units. The language we incorporate. I, I'm not going to support two ADUs at this junction.
Okay, so what you would suggest we do here is take out all of this and replace it with or. That's what I'm hearing. So it, it reads up to one accessory dwelling unit within or attached to a primary structure, or one accessory dwelling within a detached structure may be approved.
And that assumes the statements we just made, that the primary structure can be a duplex.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's.
And the duplex being the primary structure. But a duplex can't be an ADU.
Correct.
By definition.
By definition, but you have to purpose build a duplex. You can't just say.
Or whatever modification you made to your simplex that keeps it within the definition of a duplex.
Right.
You, you can certainly turn a simplex into a duplex with an ADU sitting in your driveway. Uh, it doesn't matter what order you do that in.
So, can I just?
You couldn't have, you couldn't then tack on a ADU to your duplex.
Not to the duplex, not as, not, not at least what we're.
Or to the, you know, the primary structure.
Yeah.
Either, it's either one ADU, it's either within or attached to the primary structure, whether that's duplex or a single-family home, or you could have it detached. Is that the consensus?
I think the only thing we're missing is, with the first mention of primary dwelling, just in parentheses or something, put primary or single-family or duplex.
Yes.
And then leave the text as is with the or, and then I'm happy to.
Okay.
Thumbs up it.
Yeah. Ernie?
I'm, I'm thinking, I'd be happy if we just simply said a, a maximum of three dwelling units, and then we can talk about duplex or duplex with one ADU, assuming that a duplex means the two parts of that, that single structure are approximately equal. Um, you know, I, I don't even know if it matters if they're approximately equal, uh, it doesn't matter how many owners they have, you know, if, if, if they're a condo or anything like that, but just a maximum of three livable places on the play, and one of them is an ADU fitting the size qualifications here.
Right.
And the other one.
Yeah, I guess, uh, for the sake of, again, moving this forward, I would, I would take what Ernie just said and propose it as a, it's, it's the policy summary that we're agreeing on. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the language in a certain way, but that's, that's what we have in our heads as we're going through this.
It's three.
It's three.
Okay, because that, this says two.
Right, but that's, that's why to Christian's point, if you, if you put a uh or duplex uh in there.
Where, where did, you want that, Christian?
Uh, so I would in the first attached to or near a primary dwell, or, yeah, that's the first place that says primary dwelling. I would just in parentheses, put single-family or duplex and parentheses.
Or in our definition of primary dwelling in the definition section, it is there too, it is says.
Okay, so.
So basically, either way, just to summarize, you get one ADU and the primary structure can either be a single-family home or duplex.
Okay.
Jeff?
Yeah, so uh trying to stick with the traditional language for duplex, uh, I wouldn't mind in our definitions to say it could be either a common wall or not.
I, I would rather, I would rather stick with what the state says.
Uh, that's, I, I mean, I want to tackle the multifamily thing, and it, you know, sooner than later is where I'm going. So I, I don't.
So let's, yeah, let's get the, let's get the definition section proposed where we can look at it, and then let's look at, let's look at those things uh in the, in the definitions listing. I think that'll just make it easier to talk about.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Um, so to the, to the, what we were talking about today, Stephen, I, I don't, I don't see this opening up the existing grandfathered question uh in, in any way. Do you, are you seeing that differently?
No, I'm hearing consensus that that situation, even though it's in my experience, um, often requested, often investigated uh is a non-starter.
Okay, all right, so let's, let's write up what we got. I think we've got enough consensus to to be in a place where we can write it up and, and be more in fine tuning than, than policy discussion. Okay. All right, let's bite off agricultural uses and, and see how far we can get and then before we turn into pumpkins.
Is that seven minutes?
Uh, no, that's thirty-seven minutes, but we gotta do the minutes and, and any other public comment.
Yeah, sorry, so I'm just gonna scroll through this here, bear with me here. We don't need to talk about short-term rentals uh in any.
No, like I said, that's background for future agenda item, but it is interesting to see how varied the percentage is by town. And Norwich is in roughly the lower, is the lower range of that percentage.
That's exactly the outcome, and the other, the other point I wanted to make, just so we can move on from this, is that municipalities can regulate short-term rentals. So at some point, we want to, it becomes an issue, we have the authority to, to regulate them.
Yeah. Like, we're at a low percentage now, that's great, it's not killing our housing supply right now. That doesn't mean in five years that won't change, so we don't want to forget about it. But it's not, it's not a house on fire right now, so to speak.
Yeah. So we've discussed, um, you know, this sort of three-tier question of expanding agricultural uses um a few times already. Um, one is to adopt and integrate um the concept of accessory on-farm businesses, the other is to um sort of generally exempt um sort of roadside agricultural stands and uses and um provide a definition for an open-air market, which is a market that looks like an accessory on-farm business, but is not located on a, on a, you know, designated farm. Um, one of the comments from the last meeting was a request to exempt, so in our definition um for open-air market.
Are you, sorry, Stephen, are you sharing? Because I, I'm still looking at the ADU language.
I am.
I don't know. Vince, Christian, what are you guys looking?
I'm still seeing the ADU language.
Yeah.
Okay, we are now waiting.
Stop, stop sharing and reshare or something.
Okay. Good. That looks like you guys are seeing what I'm seeing. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, um. So continuing on, um, in our definition for an open-air market, we say that um it's a conditional use in, in all districts. Um, they should only be allowed on paved roads and shall be subject to the performance standards in section three point one zero and site plan review pursuant to section five point zero three. Section three point one zero are sort of general nuisance ordinances, so noise, glare, um. Other nuisances, odor. Um, the comment from uh Jeff Lubel, um, the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, um, was a request to exempt open-air markets from uh sections five point oh three, D four B and D four C, which are provisions for district standards. And these are in particular for district standards in the residential district. Um, and I don't know if you can read that okay on the screen. Uh, four B says, buildings shall be designed in a manner that is compatible with architectural styles within the district. And DC um says that buildings shall be cited in a manner that avoids placement on primary agricultural soil, soils or other open farmland, et cetera. Um. My read on that is rather than exempting a particular use from a review standard, maybe we need to question if that review standard is appropriate. Um, and so to that, and, and it's, we sort of left the discussion there last.
Yeah.
Last meeting, um, so I'm gonna s-
Just, just to be clear, when we're start talking review standards, we're talking about something in the subdivision. Site plan review in subdivision, not zoning.
I know site plan review um is a, uh, it's a DRB process.
Okay.
It's not related to a subdivision, though you can do site plan review in a subdivision process.
Okay.
Basically, um, you look at the proposed infrastructure, the layout. Um, it requires a, you know, sort of higher level, um, level of application materials.
Right, no, I understand, I just, I just want to be sure that it's, it's within the zoning regulations that we're talking about as same.
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
Yep, so pulling that specifically out, um, so we have, this is all under five point zero three, site plan review, uh, section D, which refer to district standards. And we have district standards for the village district, um, the commercial district, all, all of our zoning districts, this is specific to rural residential. And sort of my recommendation, um, which I'm bringing to, to you guys, is that we should strike item B and amend item C. These are sort of design standards that are outside of our review process, um. They're sort of like sort of add-on elements. Particular to item B, I think that's almost impossible to interpret, given the fact that our residential, rural residential district is eighty-seven percent of, you know, the lands, it, there's a tremendous variety of architectural styles that one could find themselves compatible with. I, I don't think, um, this is an effective review standard. C I think is duplicative in the sense that through site plan review in other sections, um, particularly, um, uh, ten E, we review, the DRB will review an application, the site plan application for its um compatibility with our standards for natural resource protection. So the idea that, um, you know, primary agricultural soils, we're already doing that outside of um this district standard within all of Norwich. Open for, farmland, I find to be a vague term. Um, so I'm proposing that we amend section C to read um, that avoids placements on lands actively and exclusively devoted to farming, which I think sort of addresses the um purpose statement called out in item A, The district's rural character and historic working landscape. We're gonna focus particularly on that. Um, without duplicating effort or, you know, providing a um sort of vague standard. I think these are more specific.
Ernie?
Yeah, I I have no problem. First of all, get rid of B, that that's fine. Um, but for C, I would not strike um. Primary uh agricultural soils or other open farming, because those are. Neutral, actually neutral terms. Um, and on top of it all, you know, one of the things that has to be done. It it's like trying to conserve, you know, efforts to conserve the environment, you know, clean air and all that sort of stuff. Is protecting farmland, because once it's turned into something else. Other than, you know, farm uh farm. Um. Farm stands and stuff like that, don't do the damage. But, you know, it's easy to take some, uh, if you if you. You don't wanna take primary ag land out of out of. Put it, you don't wanna put it in a in a in a place where you can can do do. Make it so that it becomes developable and and and, you know, taking it out of. Um, just taking it out of farm, it just making it uh taking it out of farming. Doesn't change the quality or the value of the land as uh farmland. Nor does.
I hear that.
Ernie, I'm 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 hearing Stephen say that he he is agreeing with that, but it's done elsewhere. Is that?
In a more comprehensive fashion.
I I'm I'm just thinking that, you know. I I'm just thinking that unless you absolutely tell them that they have to go look at that other where that elsewhere is. Um, when they're trying to to determine whether they're gonna.
There it there, it's unavoidable. When we're going through site plan review, all of those elements need to be addressed. Either by the applicant or by the DRB in their review.
It's it's equally, it's equally unavoidable to this putting it here or putting it there. Uh, putting it in both is redundant in that sense.
And you know, this sort of like special district standards, um. You know, it I I think is a good place to state. That we want to avoid placement on active, you know, things that are actively and exclusively in farming.
I see, I agree with that, but I'm I'm afraid of, I'm afraid of. You know, somebody taking something that could be active just isn't right now. And making it, putting it into a situation uh that it now no longer can be used as farmland. I mean, something like, you know.
Yeah, you know, I. That's for, you know, that that's so specific to a circumstance, it's very difficult to generally. You know, agree or disagree with that. Um.
But you're saying that would fail the test in an in another place in site plan review.
It's it's a, it's, you know, it's a rung on the that review ladder, you know, protection of natural resources.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff had Jeff had his hand up.
Yeah, so on my my two macro comments, I mean, I see open air market. Um, open air markets are conditional use in all districts. Um, and then down a couple, one, two, three more, it says. Uh, accessory on farm businesses. I I think from what we talked about last time, I'd like to see that also as a conditional use.
Yeah, the the only thing we can do. That we're allowed to do as a municipality, because it's under sort of the ag umbrella, is site plan review.
Uh. Maybe, uh.
Absolutely, it's, you know. That's the only mechanisms that municipalities are allowed to regulate.
So then the question for me is in the site plan review criteria. There are conditional use criteria, those could be melded and meshed.
Perhaps.
So I I don't, so, you know, I I said supporter of Sweetland Farms. Look, we got a, we got a a site that's got a whole bunch of use that hasn't been permitted and should have been permitted. And so what's the mechanism to address that going forward for any other facility? My only other comment is under five oh three, I wouldn't change anything in five oh three, and I'm gonna oppose that other than D. So I don't agree with the seventy five with uh, you know, boundary setback. Primarily because we've got a, we've had a RR wide zoning context. So um, I I I'm not in favor of changing any of the language that's there. Uh, or, you know, I'll just say that. I don't wanna make any of the revisions that are proposed proposing this document, other than maybe changing D with respect to the setback.
And um. How 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 is uh B useful?
So in my travels in myriad municipalities, the question is, what are the joint properties? You know, pick a parcel, um. RR, your neighbors are gonna be residential. So how does it fit?
Well, I don't know. They could be farms, they could be, I mean, there could, there are other uses. That are both per, you know, permissible and conditional beyond. Straight residential use, in fact.
Our town plan talks about how aesthetically and otherwise we fit into the setting.
Minimal commercial use. That's that, that's the.
But I'm not just, to be clear, I don't see the word use in B at all. I say, I see architectural styles.
Yeah, that's, I don't wanna change, I mean. Again, uh. You know, I'm not sure this is the right form, but I don't wanna change any of that language other than the D with respect to the seventy five with setback.
Okay.
Does any, I mean, any other thoughts? I don't. I don't think this is, this is an absolute, this this is a response to a public comment that we're we're trying, Stephen's trying to craft something. Uh, that's defensible and trying to get rid of some redundancy and so forth. I don't, I don't take this as being a huge policy. Statement that that needs too much work, but uh any other particular thoughts on it?
Yeah, yeah, and so if I may, if if the parcel is less than ten acres in the town. Uh, it it it's a town issue. Anything over ten, the town's not relevant. The 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 state with act two fifty is gonna review ag soils, you you know, uh, sub criteria nine and.
So do we in our site plan review.
I understand, uh. My point is, it doesn't matter what we say. Period. If there's an act two fifty review, they're gonna take it up with respect to the state law. So.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't have a problem waiving concern, so if if you came to me, cause I've I've done enough projects over time under. Under uh B uh or uh C with respect to ag soils and so forth. Uh, so, uh, you know, the open space criteria, act two fifty, the axel criteria, you better do an alternatives analysis. Is there a better place to do this? So, you know, if there's a demonstrable way to show the plant, the the DRB, that this is the only place where I could put this building in parking lot. Then then let's get an approval.
Yeah, you know, I, the ag soil, prime ag soil that we have in Norwich is all. All of it. Eighty five percent of it occupied by some residential structure.
I'm not agreeing or disagreeing. Ag soil, like steep slopes, deer yards. Wetlands, they're all being used, floodways, they're all being used as zoning upwards. I get it. Whether any of that makes any sense is not the point.
Does anybody feel strongly uh on these amendments? I I don't see them as being too earth shattering, but do does. Anybody have any other thoughts on these? I'm, I mean, I'm I'm fine with leaving them out, uh, if if that's. Uh, I don't hear anybody jumping up and down to to.
I mean, I guess not having context for DRB uh activity. I mean, I guess Jeff Lubel brought up the primag thing is. I mean, I I if I remember correctly, he was just concerned that that could become a limiting, like. Someone overreaching and saying that, well, it's, you know, this could potentially be a prime egg soil, so we'll uh we'll. Uh, you know, uh, jettison the plan or or say, give it a big no. Um, I mean, I I'm assuming that. The DRB would have further context to to review this, and that's that's not going to be reason to reject.
What the protection of natural resources is. A section of site plan review. I, you know, my concern is that somebody would look at this and say. Okay. Avoid placement, shall avoid placement. As a stronger standard than what we've captured already. In the natural resources review section. So it sort of creates this weird dynamic. Uh, um. That, you know, that's the kind of stuff that lawyers feast on. And and I just don't, I I think, you know, it's duplicative, it doesn't really. Do any things, C, do anything other than. Duplicate what comes prior. It's not a specific standard, it's just. Um. Prime ag soils and farmland, both of which, I mean, open for farmland is very subject to. Um, a variety of interpretation. I think this doesn't do anything. And therefore, we should consider removing it. Same with B, which is an impossible standard. Is compatible with architectural styles within the district with regard to building scale, size, mass and materials. That also would include the town garage. Right? That's in the rural residential district.
Except it's not a an ag use, I mean.
No, it doesn't have to be an ag use.
Yeah, well, what we're talking about, I know, I get it. I disagree with you, Steve, on on that last point. I don't wanna change any of this, folks. I I think scale, so if you've got a. A two acre lot with a three, with a two and a half story house. Or a fifty acre lot with a three story, you know, commercial building scale. Uh, I I think it's flexibility. I think the question with the DRB's posture is going to be. Hey, look, I get it. When the DRB was created in two thousand and four, so the time that Ernie was on. My perception is that DRB's sole goal was to say no to everything. I haven't seen that since, and I think to 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 the to that extent, from my view. The DRB membership subsequently said to the planning commission, hey, how can we be more reasonable to accommodate site considerations?
Mm hmm.
I, you know, I, one thing I haven't done is look to see if any of the decisions the DRB have written have referenced this section.
Hmm.
Uh, I've done the XL thing on individual law, so it's the same, it's the same thing.
But that's, that's not the experience that I'm talking about. Not your experience. I'm talking about Norwich DRB.
No, I'm talking on Norwich DRB. I'm talking about Norwich DRB for single family homes, for single family subdivisions. For uh uh the baseball field, the soccer field, the the softball field. Even the dad gum trails over behind uh Mary Cross. So I've done this over and over and over again, so I think the DRB needs to have the flexibility to waive. You know, uh.
Then why are you arguing to keep the language?
As a, as a, uh, so the language itself. Cause it relates to the to the state uh law. There are.
Even though we are reviewing that under section five point zero three ten.
Yes, absolutely. And and the the idea of adding lands actively exclusively devoted to farming. That's no less nebulous than anything else we're gonna change. I just don't wanna change.
That's specific language from um, you know, state statute about how you define farming.
I I I understand, but it's completely nebulous. So we're gonna go to Sweetland Farm. What's being farmed? We're gonna go to Route five south.
Well, it's it's very, it's very clear what is and isn't a farm. Absolutely.
Well, devoted to farm.
All right, can can we, I just wanna close on this if we can, or. I don't mind uh leaving this piece open, but I'd like to ask whether there are other, any other open. Topics on the agricultural uses piece. We we we've heard the different sides of of this particular. D four B and C, which is basically a response to Jeff Lubel's comment. It wasn't, we weren't talking about it before. So are there, are there other comments or or topics that we need to put on the table relative to the ag uses, the three points? That Stephen made at the beginning. Cause if if not, that's good. Uh, I I take that as progress and um. I think I I would ask. I guess to some degree, although this isn't really the the right way to do it, but I'd ask. Stephen and Jeff to have any other further conversation on the topic that might be useful. Uh, to get us to a a place where, so when you're gonna roll it all together in one document, Stephen, you. Uh, determine uh whether it looks like this or whether it looks like an untouched version of this from previous. I don't. I don't think this is a uh an enormous issue that needs to slow the presses. Um. Uh, but I just, I would just want us to get past uh one way or the other.
Okay.
All right, but that, so that I'm hearing that the other other pieces of agricultural use uh are. Uh, have enough agreement that those will roll into the document as as proposed. Okay. Um. I am inclined not to bite off waivers unless somebody thinks in five minutes we can do something useful on waivers.
Can I just?
Or density bonus. If if we can nail either waivers or density bonus in five minutes, I'll take it, but.
I think we, I think we can, I can nail not, we can definitely nail the density bonus. That's that's pretty straightforward. I would just like. To point out um to the to the members that as they think about waivers. That our zoning regulations have to have a process by which they can be granted and appealed. Okay, so we have to explicitly say, if you would like a waiver, this is the criteria you have to meet. And this is how the that decision is appealed. And I'll leave it at that. I provide.
So is that a, is that a statement of because of new of changes in state law since our regs went into place? That is.
No, waivers have been in statute since two thousand and seven. We do not have in our, any of our. Um, zoning regulations or subdivision regulations, the ability to specifically waive dimensional standards. If we want to offer that.
Mm hmm. Okay, Jeff and then Ernie.
Yeah, I completely agree with Steve. I I in spades, uh, I think our regulations are. Uh, what's the right word? Are 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 pretty onerous with respect to dimensional requirements. That don't contemplate on the ground uh issues that the that the DRB should be allowed to consider.
Okay, Ernie?
Um, yeah, Steve, what is the the waiver statute? Can you cite the waiver statute?
Is it right up above there?
Yeah, it's um.
There it is.
Forty four fourteen. Item eight. Uh, Ernie, it's in the packet and if you want more context, I mean, that's it, that's direct from title twenty four.
Okay. All right, so I like, uh, I'm I'm hearing. I'm hearing progress on waivers. Any, you wanna try and tell, so density bonus is a very simple. For a very specific. Subset, meaning in a, I think it's in a PUD of a certain type. Um. Can we increase the the?
Yeah.
It benefit. So in in my mind, this is something that's gonna happen very infrequently in Norwich. Um, and and changing this bonus, you know, may have a pretty low probability of making anything happen. Um, but I don't particularly see a negative, but uh what do other people think?
I'm just gonna keep, can you guys see that? Okay, I haven't checked.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thoughts? Jeff, yes, Steve, yes. Any negatives? Okay.
I mean, I just echo your positive thoughts. I don't think it's gonna make a huge. Meaningful impact, given what's the town, but like, why not?
Yeah, it doesn't, the the negative is is really pretty limited. You gotta get across a whole lot of hurdles before it even matters.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's great, guys. I think that's that's really good progress. Stephen, you've got what you need to roll this into one. And then.
No.
That's what will be, so what we'll be looking at at the next meeting will be. A PDF of a a Microsoft, single Microsoft doc of our. Uh, zoning regulations with all this stuff rolled in and commented.
Yeah, and um, just just to be clear. Some of these amendments in, you know, in terms of language. You know, um. Parts may touch both documents. Okay, so we're gonna be, we're gonna be reviewing edits to both of them.
Okay, so and you're, rather than have kind of a parking lot for subdivision changes, you you wanna move them.
The idea would. Would not be to really substantially change how we. The idea would, would not be to really substantially change how we do subdivision. I'm just, all I'm saying is, you know. For example. You know, the parking requirements is one, where if it's referenced in both, I'm going to address it in both. There might be references that. Cross both.
So do you anticipate as we go forward with public hearings, send it to the select board, they have public hearings? That those would be for both zoning regulations and subdivision regulations?
In so much as a change in the zoning regulation might require. A change to the subdivision regulations to remain consistent.
Okay.
So for example.
Now, we, we will move that bundle, but we aren't going to independently go looking. Go digging in the subdivision files for.
I just want to say, I think this is, what Steve's saying is very wise. So we're going to try to de-conflict. Going forward.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, yep. We're not, we're not adding new conflicts back from the subdivision regs. De-conflict the other way. Ernie, is your hand up or still up?
I'm, I'm saving for the, when we discuss this in more detail.
Okay, fine. All right, can we move to the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve Feb, Feb eleven? Second. All right. Any comments, changes, edits to the minutes? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes of Feb eleven, twenty twenty-four as written?
Aye.
Aye. Animus, thank you. Public comment. On any items not on the agenda. I, looks like Peggy's left. I got no public on Zoom. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Who's Amy?
Amy's my wife. She's on, she's always.
Sorry. I did not know.
She's always on to help suggest things under the radar and, you know.
Okay.
If you hear a text ping, that's usually something helpful for me that's coming.
Okay, good. All right, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. Second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. That's good progress, good work. I will talk to you later.
Yeah.